Yeah, we're gonna have to do the mental.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Are we going to the next one then?
So if we go, and as you can see, all the rest of them, you know, based on that. So if we go to the next one, I used the kind of the same format. But what I did was because different people have, of course, different values on their home. And I could create this in any number of ways, but I did 150, 300, 450, 600, 750. Kind of a broad range there. And what additional taxes or what the homeowner would see above and beyond what the tax levy would have been. So I can create a, I can add a spreadsheet where I can actually make two columns or two sections. What the additional is above and beyond and what the grand total would be approximately. So as we can see, it can range, well.
Well, that second column, third column from the left, that $300,000 column is pretty close to that median.
Pretty corresponds to that, yes.
Median house price.
So it corresponds pretty close to that.
So for a 3% increase for a house with an assessed value of $750,000, what you'd really be looking at if you were the taxpayer was a tax increase of about $260.
$206. Oh yeah, maybe add the 55.
Plus the 55.
Right, $260 for the next year, because we can't leave out the 55.
Right.
Because even if.
It's gonna be more than 50,000.
It's gonna be more than that.
For the $300,000 house, it would be 50 plus 82.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we do need those 50.
Yeah, I'll have to figure that one. I think it's a little bit more.
So I'd say it'd probably be better for the homeowner to know what the total increase is gonna be. Not so much what the tax levy increases.
Yep.
The one thing though, it's no guarantee that that's exactly what it's gonna be.
Right, right, this is an estimate.
It does make a big difference of what's coming onto the roll and what goes off the roll.
Yeah, exactly.
As a big, huge player.
All we're trying to do is to give people an idea of what they're looking at.
Oh yeah, right, exactly.
You know, because when you talk about percentage increases and tax levy limits, it's all very abstract.
Yeah.
And, you know, people have been conditioned to think that tax increases are anathema. And that, you know, if the numbers aren't meaningful to them, they're fearful of anything that sounds like a tax increase. So putting it in concrete terms makes it much easier for us too to understand what this really means.
And I can give you two sets of numbers that is gonna come somewhere in between. Because it could be as low as, and let's just say, like I mentioned before, if we just went at the tax cap. It should be at the tax cap, 1.26. The homeowner theoretically should only have a 1.14. But we're starting as at 1.26. Like, there is no additional new, nothing out there. And that's where a lot of school districts, some school districts publish their tax levy increase. And we're forced to now. But before the tax cap era, there, a lot of school districts would go with a tax rate increase. Because they would figure in additional properties that are coming on, which would lower that, or would lower the tax rate.
Right.
So they're anticipating that. We don't do that. We always anticipate it on the high side and it typically always comes in lower. So, but we've never advertised that. You know, people think, oh, the tax levy is 1.26, that's what my, no, it should come in lower than that.
Yeah, some school districts who maybe don't want to show the levy increase. And back in the day, what you went out with was your budget increase. You know, in the good old days, it was what your budget increase was. Nobody cared what your tax levy increase was. But some districts would go out with an estimate, an estimated tax rate increase, because that made their budget look better. And more than a few times, they got stung when, at the end of August, when all the utilization rates came in and the assessed values came in. Wow, there was a significant discrepancy. And then people would say, you told me my taxes were only gonna go up $2.32. And they went up $6.15 per thousand. You misled me. So that's why going out with tax rate estimates is tricky. It's tricky business. You gotta be careful with that.
You definitely have to go with your tax levy increases. You're mandated to do that now. But some school districts will go out with the tax, an estimated tax rate increase in addition to the tax levy. It's not mandated, but some people do do that.
So that's what we have for you. I think it, I think it still begs the question as to where we go between now and when we meet a week from tonight and ultimately when we adopt the budget on the 19th.
Deidre.
So in the Finance Committee, we talked about, and there was sort of some general agreement that we should, you know, attempt to pierce the cap, to make up for the difference. And, you know, one of the issues is, as you were sort of alluding to Lisa, about kind of the perspective too on what this means, right? Like, from a historical perspective, let's say, you know, if we went out for like a 2.8% increase or something that would, you know, cover most of it, or 3%, which would, that's low historically, right? I mean, we would have had many, many years where like, 3%, that's great, okay, let's take it out. But in this tax levy cap era, the narrative has changed so much. And in fact, we have to get a 60%, you know, approval vote from the voters. So, but that was where we were from the Finance Committee. And this, you know, one of the things then in the Communications Committee, the next day that we talked about, was trying to shape all this useful information, you know, succinctly to give to people sort of some historical perspective, you know, more recent historical perspective on it. And the impact, you know, our best estimates for an impact. You know, it's something of a risky proposition, but, you know, we have a second chance. But, and then we'd have to, through that perhaps, you know, we probably should think ahead of time, if it didn't happen, how much we'd have to cut then to present to people a budget that is at the tax cap, which is so incredibly low.
Lisa.
So does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on what we should do?
You know, there was some discussion about whether we should do, you know, I mean, with the numbers we have in front of us, if there was a tax levy increase of 3%, that would cover completely the gap that we have now.
Right.
Or, you know, for a couple of reasons, do we, you know, make a few more cuts and keep it just under 3? You know, this conversation about bullet aid is interesting. Could we potentially, you know, keep it under 3 and find the cuts? Or, you know, make up for the difference in additional revenue? We were thinking close to 3, I think.
Yeah, I'll just point out, you know, this document, if we cut everything on this list, there's still a gap.
Right.
So if we decided that we can't possibly cut anything else other than what's on this list, we still have a gap and we would have to pierce the cap and get a 60% voter approval rate. So, you know, at some point, you have to have a conversation about whether we want to pierce the cap and get a 60% voter approval for, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 worth of.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Increase that we have to have because we can't cut anything else? Or should we go farther and not cut some of these other things? So, go ahead Lisa.
I think, I think that's an excellent point. I do want to ask a question though that comes off of that, which is, in past years, when we dealt with, you know, how to fund the budget without piercing the cap, one of the things that we've done is we've used unrestricted fund balance to close the gap. Now, I know that we were hit hard in our unrestricted fund balance last year because of special ed costs. But, you know, if we're talking about such a small difference, if we made all these cuts, and I'm not advocating that, I'm simply exploring the question, would we have sufficient money in unrestricted fund balance to close that gap without piercing the cap? Or is it just a given that one way or the other, we have to pierce the cap?
Let me try to answer that in part. And again, at the risk of giving anybody false hopes that the sun will come out tomorrow, that's your bottom dollar. There is the issue of bullet aid that is potentially still unresolved. And may not be unresolved, may not be resolved by the time we have to make a final decision. But that is one of the very few moving parts that may still be in play and may have a positive, more or less positive, impact on this scenario. Okay, that's one thing. The, we're currently, as we do every year at this time, we're currently going through special education annual reviews. So there is a possibility that our budget will drop some possibility, depending on what programs our kids need, are decided by the CSC. It could go the other way too. But we're, we're watching that very closely and we should know, we should know by next Tuesday whether any should know, whether there, especially whether there are any reductions in high cost students, students who go out of district to programs. Again, I'm not, I'm not rolling the dice on that one yet, but it's still a moving part, okay? So those are things we're looking at. They may have an impact. They may have an impact, you know, even if we decided to, to put out a budget that exceeded the tax levy cap and there's a $25,000 difference, it might eat that difference, okay? Again, there's lots of mites and maybes, no certainties here. The other thing I want to bring up, because I think it plays into the bigger picture, and we talked about this at one, maybe two Finance Committee meetings, that there are about $80,000 of that 425 in the list of remaining cuts, potential cuts that are tied to going to four sections of the core courses in 7th grade. As we did this year in 6th grade, when smaller classes were coming into the middle school from Chancellor. And we, you know, we had discussions about what's the impact of that on the staff. And the impact financially is, is a positive one. I mean, there's $80,000 worth of savings there. But there's, there's a, there's a staff impact that results from doing that, which essentially takes four teachers, one English teacher, one social studies teacher, one science teacher, and one math teacher, who teach in the 7-12 tenure area. Even though we're talking about reducing sections in 7th grade, it's going to impact somebody in each of those core areas in the 7-12 tenure area. See, unlike the relative ease of doing this at the elementary school, where everybody's in the same tenure area except for your specials teachers, now in middle school and high school, you're dealing with tenure areas that are 7-12 in most cases. And in science, they're chemistry, earth science, physics, biology. They are discrete tenure areas unless somebody has dual certification, they can't switch back and forth.
Right.
So it makes it that much more difficult in the science tenure area. So there was a discussion at one of our Finance Committee meetings about, so how do you deal with that from the, from the staffing perspective and the human being perspective, okay? Then maybe not necessarily the finance perspective. So we've, Tom and I have had several conversations with Ed Davenport and with John Kennitzer as recently as this morning to explore those possibilities. One of the, one of the easy lifts for this coming year, maybe not beyond this coming year, but for this coming year, we have a 7-12 science teacher who is going to be out on child caring leave. So we're going to have to hire a substitute science teacher to replace that teacher on leave. And I'm being very cautious not to use anyone's names in this discussion. So you'll have to either fill in the blanks or see me after the meeting. But, I would share that with you, but not publicly out of respect for those individuals. So we could hire a .8 FTE long-term science substitute, which would not impact any of our current staff and could save us $20,000 of that 425,000, okay? We, we talked with Ed and John and their thinking is that there are, there are other assignments of value to the school district and the program that, that they could occupy three of those teachers. Not the science teacher, we've already taken care of the science piece of it with the long-term substitute. Due to one individual's dual certification, which makes that person much more flexible to use in other assignments. And some other needs that are in the departments that I mentioned. Granted, that doesn't save you any money. No, it doesn't save you any money, but we talked to John and Ed about if we were to engage those teachers in doing some other things. And I'm not talking about like proctoring a study hall, I'm talking about teaching work, okay? That we may be coming back to them and asking them to find a $20,000 offset someplace else in their programs. Again, not an easy lift, but they know that they have to do what they have to do. And they're sensitive to the fact that we don't want to generate a stable of .8 FTE teachers. And that's just not good on a lot of different levels. So the other alternative that was suggested in discussion at one point was, well, let's just keep the 7th grade in five sections and at least give them a heads up that over the succeeding year or two, they're gonna have to be cut back. So again, unless something changes, unless they build a factory in, you know, someplace and all of a sudden we have this big increase, but let's not count on that. I would, I would prefer to find other things for those people to do and cut the number of sections down to four, like we had in the 6th grade, just for the sake of consistency. Because the following year, they're gonna be moving into 8th grade and there will now be four sections in 8th grade.
Yes.
And kind of the net effect of that over several years is that in '16, '17, unless we do one of these two things, i.e. keep five sections or find other teaching assignments for those people, those handful of people. We're just talking about the four common area teachers now, not all the specials. That's a whole other bear. But essentially, you'd have four people at .8 FTE. Then the following year, you'd have four people at .6 FTE. Then the following year, you'd have four people at .4 FTE. Now, now you're under a half. So what you wind up doing is, you wind up, maybe you can combine some positions, maybe. Depends on their certification. 19, 20 school year, for .2 FTE. I mean, you don't, you don't even have anything close to a part-time teacher there. And in 2021, you have no positions for those, you're down a position there.
Right.
Okay, so I mean, that's, very simplistically, that's how it's gonna work out over the next several years. There will also be an impact on the special area teachers. But as we sit here, there's no way of knowing who will be cut, you know, which positions might be cut. But it's inevitable that if you're bringing in sections of, you know, a class of 70 kids or 80 kids instead of a class of 100 or 110 kids, it's gonna have a spillover impact over that many years in, in the special area. So now you're looking at having special area teachers who go at some point to a .8 and to a .6, then combining them into, you know, a full-time position and one person, you know, doesn't have a job. It's, unless something happens, that's, that's pretty inevitable. Then again, if you want to really get depressed, and I only say this because I believe in sharing the pain. Because this is the kind of thing that is keeping me up at night thinking about this stuff, is in five years, you have three sections coming into the middle school. Because there's three sections in kindergarten this year. And then the following year, three into 6th and 7th. And then the following year, three into 6th, 7th, and 8th. And you repeat this whole process yet again. I mean, I know this is looking a lot of years out, but unless something happens with our, with our enrollment, that's, again, that's kind of the way it's going over a lot of years. It's very depressing, especially to a board and a superintendent that spent 18 years building programs and now we're looking at seeing them erode. And there's a whole other discussion, I don't know, people have mentioned about what do we do in terms of, you know, building a coalition, our community, to see if we can do anything about that. But, and that's, that's, that's a whole other discussion and we should have that conversation. But that's, that's not our conversation, in my opinion, for this, developing this budget and this budget cycle. But I just wanted to kind of give you a long, a long view of how we see it playing out. Another complication, just to be perfectly honest, is once we start to get into, especially the high school, a lot of our high school teachers teach six courses. I could be naive, but I don't see people being willing to teach a sixth course when their colleague's getting cut back to .8 or .6. And they don't have to teach a sixth course, it's totally voluntary, okay? So there's, there's gonna be a little bit of chafing there as that plays out in the system. It may keep some people afloat, maybe an extra year. If I teach six and I say, you know what, I'm not gonna teach six next year, give my assignment to my colleague who's about to get cut. But eventually, again, if this whole cycle perpetuates itself, that's what's gonna happen. So just want to let you know where we are in the short term. And looking out at the long term, it's, you know, it's considerably bleaker. A potential bright spot is that we may have some retirements over the next year or so. As a contract rolls over, sometimes, sometimes people decide, you know what? I think I'll retire now because I'm not sure what the future contract may hold for me in terms of my contribution to health insurance or, I mean, who knows what? And that's kind of a phenomenon, that's not unusual, is, okay, it's the end of the contract cycle. I think this is, I was gonna go anyway in a year or so. Now's a good time for me to put my papers in, which then frees up some money in terms of the budget and also frees up positions for people who maybe were the first hired, now they're not the first hired anymore. And when you hire new people to come in, you tell them, you know what, we're only hiring a .8 FTE person. Or we'll hire you full-time, but we can't guarantee you're gonna be 1.0 FTE for forever. You know, we're not in that business anymore of a lifetime job at that 1.0 FTE level. So there's some serious moving parts for us all to be thinking about, both short term and longer term. And I felt I had to lay those out on the table because they're, they're informing our thinking about, okay, what do we do? What do we recommend? What do we cut? What do we not cut? You know, my, my personal preference would be to see if we could hang on to as many of our teachers full-time, as long as we reasonably can, as long as the budget allows us to do that. But we're kind of on the cusp of, well, maybe the tipping point is a, is a better phrase to use, budgetarily and staffing-wise. It's just, just an incontrovertible fact, I think.
So I saw Lisa's hand then, Deidre.
Joe, I agree with you that the long-term planning aspect of that is beyond the scope of what we're doing now. You know, we have talked in past meetings about the need to start thinking about doing some serious long-range planning for the district. And so now would be the time to just reiterate that that should be a product, a project for the board going forward. And, you know, it's not gonna be an easy project, but it's gotta happen. It's gonna happen whether we plan for it or not. So, you know, we're better off just tackling it and maybe trying to shape it in a way that ultimately we can manage better.
But what I've been struggling with on this particular topic is whether there's anything that we can do to reverse the trend, or whether it's just a matter of dealing with the inevitability of the trend. And I couldn't sit here and tell you, I mean, the easy answer is you gotta deal with the inevitability of it. Whether we are able in some way, shape, or form to reverse a declining enrollment trend, I mean, that is a huge lift. And I'm not saying we shouldn't talk about it and explore it. But I wouldn't want to sit here and say, oh yeah, no problem, we could turn that declining enrollment trend around in five years. It's, it would not be, it would not be easy, but it should be discussed. The other part of it, kind of coming to grips with what it means, and I laid out a very rudimentary five to 10-year trend and the impact it could have and likely would have on our staffing. That'll happen one way or the other if we can't reverse the trend.
Deidre.
Well, as one of the people who was in that Finance Committee meeting when we first started to talk about this prospect, you know, I completely share your sense of the gravity of what faces this district. And, you know, I don't think I can say it strongly enough that the human beings in this district are the heart of the school. Teachers who work with young people in this district are the heart of our school. And since I've been part of this board and even before I joined this board, the hours of, you know, thoughtful deliberation that have gone into hirings and, you know, thinking about the process of hiring, thinking about tenuring of teachers, really tremendous investment, human investment on the part of everyone in this community around our teachers. So I just want to commend you, Joe, for working with our administrators to be supple and creative and think about how we can try to face this challenge immediately, right? In this budget cycle, which it sounds like you're doing with, you know, great sort of energy and inventiveness right now, but also in the long term. Because absolutely, I can't state it strongly enough, if our teachers whom we've invested so much in and who invest so much of themselves in our district, see a prospect where each year there's going to be kind of declining percentage of a full-time contract, there's no better way to gut your organization and demoralize your teachers and your community, your parents, your kids, everyone. So it seems like this is absolutely our top priority looking forward in terms of long-term planning.
Rick.
That actually has the potential of impacting the image of the school district and the people who are interested in moving in. We start cutting people back to .8 or .6 and that becomes the image of this district. It says something, whether we're forced to or not. It says something to people that are looking. are looking to move.
I would want to say, though, that we're not the only school district in this region going through this. This is a trend, and I'm saying this as much for anybody who might be listening to this on YouTube, that this is not a Reinbeck problem so much as a regional problem. Virtually every school district, except perhaps for one, and again, I won't mention names, is seeing declining enrollment in this county.
Yeah.
So this is, it's a regional problem, and...
It's actually a statewide problem.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Except for New York City.
So I don't want people to get the idea that, yeah, Reinbeck's going down the tubes. I mean, if anybody's going down the tubes, we're all kind of going there together. I mean, misery does love company, but, you know, it's not like people are jumping ship here, or we're the only ones having, having these kinds of issues that have to be dealt with, because there's plenty of company out there.
Ediger?
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate some, you know, plans going forward that I think we've already said in other times, which is, you know, that a workshop perhaps this summer of the board to focus on a plan related to declining enrollment is, seems to be in order. And secondly, an idea that bubbled up at our meeting with the Science Foundation and the PTSO, which is to gather some sort of coalition of community members or task force to talk about the future of the schools in a way that can be more supportive of our public schools. And I think both things happening simultaneously are really important. I think it's great that we've, you know, Joe, you've laid out some of the problems really clearly here tonight. We're aware of them, and then we have communicated to some of our community members about it, which is important. So, you know, I think it's important that we have sort of this idea about how to move forward both ways. And then, you know, I would like to get back to kind of, I'd like to know where my colleagues think about this budget and the tax levy cap, because there are a couple of things in play, maybe two, right? But, you know, it's two weeks that we have to pass, you know, approve a budget, and I really appreciate it in the finance meeting and in terms of what you've just said tonight, Mark, that if we're going to pierce it at all, like, maybe we should go out for, which are all relatively low numbers anyway, to sort of reset us back to, you know, so that we position ourselves, should the budget pass by 60% or more, that position ourselves well going into next year's budget. Now, what that number might be, if we were to find out about bullet aid, or hopefully we'd find out about, you know, special ed placements, whether that budget's decreasing or not, you know, we could play with that. But I guess I'm just, I don't know where people stand on just the concept.
Diane?
So I don't actually know, haven't my mind set up yet. I mean, I'm in favor of piercing the cap, but it's, you know, it's risky, because if it doesn't pass, then you have no chance of losing at all. So, you know, I like the idea when it first came up with a 2%. It's what was sold by the governor, you know, many years ago, so people believed the tax levy to be the 2%. I mean, when it first came out, it was, we had above 2% people who asked me to buy. How can it be above 2%? That's the law. So that number seems to make sense. It's what people are comfortable with. You know, when you look at it here, it is very tempting to go to 3%, that takes care of our problems. But, you know, I think there's, when I look at the list, you know, and when people would ask us, and they will ask us, why we're asking for 3%, they'll want to know why, they'll want to know what's on this list. And I think, even though we spent a lot of time at the workshop going through it, and we know how important everything on the list is, so make light of anything, you know, I think when you look at the first five priority list, you know, there may be a hard sell for people to say, why they should pay more taxes for supplies and equipment, you know, most of the things that are on those, it's not until you really get to like six that there's things that people would be like, wait, I don't want those cuts. So I lean a little bit to making some cuts, and here's the cap, I think, with that right numbers, I'm not sure, you know, the 2% makes sense, so, you know, 2.5, you know, 2 and 1/2 would help us quite a bit too, but, you know, how do you explain that rationale to people? So I'm not quite set in my mind, but there's some, I...
Anyone else?
Lisa.
Lisa.
I think that, one way or another, we're going to have to go out with a budget that pierces the cap. I also have not yet made my mind up about what percentage I would be willing to support, and I do, since we don't need to make the decision tonight, I do think that we should see how things develop, certainly over the course of the next week.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that we'll be talking about it during the week as more information comes in, or doesn't come in. I mean, I raised the concept of a meeting or two ago about resetting to put us into, to put us into a situation where we're not faced with a similar problem to the problem we're looking at this year, next year. And I still think that logic makes sense, but, I mean, I do think that Diane has a very good point, because this is not easy stuff to grasp. And again, our governor and our legislators have sold the public on the idea that 2% good, more than 2% bad. And I would like to think, and in fact, I do think that our taxpayers are more intelligent and sophisticated than the governor and our legislators may have given them credit for, but I don't deceive myself that it's going to be a hard sell for some people. In fact, even if we go out with a budget that only increases the levy by 2%, it will be a hard sell for some people who think that, you know, we should find a way to live within our means, whatever that means. So I'm in favor of the concept, and I'd like to see if events will make it easier for me to make a decision.
Right.
I would say, and I don't mean to shortcut the round robin here, but I would, good, bad, or indifferent, I would urge us to come to a decision a week from tonight. I think it's a bad idea for us to be sitting here on the 19th when we have to adopt the budget, to be still having this conversation. That my goal is, when we walk out of here on April 12th, we walk out of here united around a course of action. Whatever we know by that time is what we have to work on. And you know what? If we find out on, if we decide on a course of action on the 12th, and we find out on Monday, April 18th, that we're getting $100,000 in bullet aid, yay, that's a great problem to have, we can dial it back. But I think to go into the 19th still not knowing is, I think we ought to plan on whatever things are like on the 12th. That's what we're assuming is going to be the scenario, and then make the tough decision around this table as to what we're going to support, and hopefully, we can, you can all support it unanimously. I mean, that would be my...
Fair enough.
My hope. And I'll leave it at that.
Ediger?
Because we have a pretty short turnaround with communicating. We need to know what we are communicating. I guess one question I have is, is there anyone sitting around the table who believes that we would not override the tax cap at this point, or thinks there's any way for us to take that course of action? I mean, I'm assuming not, but, you know, I just thought I should ask, as opposed to talking about the percentage increase.
The actual number, sure.
Is there anyone who actually thinks...
Okay.
There's a way to do it?
Well, I just want to reiterate, you know, and we had a conversation in the finance committee meeting, that, you know, we can only make just so many cuts, you know, even to supply items, you know, I mean, before we start cutting into the quality of the educational program that we have, and when we start, you know, talking about, you know, cutting back teachers to .8 or .6, or whatever, whatever the number happens to be, where there's a potential that if we cut in one area, for example, 7th grade, you know, some of those teachers may not get cut, they may be, we may be making cuts other places because of the, you know, the whole certifications and, you know, union, you know, bumping rights and all those sorts of things that are way too complicated and will take way too long to explain here in this meeting, but, you know, eventually, we're going to be compromising the quality of their education.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, I never thought I would say this, but I, you know, definitely, this year, I have to say I'm in favor of piercing the cap.
Laura?
You know, I agree that there's really no way around the idea that we have to override the cap, but my concern is that we don't have a Plan B if it goes down.
Right.
And I'd be much more comfortable saying, okay, we'll go out at three, or we'll go out at a true two, if I knew that, okay, on May 19th, if it goes down, then we can put out a budget that we can be confident in the second time. Or else, it's going to be more than $450,000 because we're going to be at zero base, right? So we'll even, we'll have to take out 780, right, or whatever it is, because we can increase it 335 right now, but if we have to go to zero...
Yeah, right.
Right, so I think there's no way around overriding, but we have to know really what we're doing, what the long plan is for these votes, because I'm not confident that our community, as much as we support going to two or three, or whatever it is, to try to reset our position, I'm not sure our community is going to buy into that. We all love this place. Not everybody else loves paying the bill for this place. It's my great concern.
Could I respond to that? And again, you'll forgive me for what I'm sure will seem like oversimplifying the answer to your question, but regardless of what we might set the tax levy at, that's above the tax levy cap, and I'm not even dealing with whether it's 2% or 3% or 2.85, or whatever it is, and if it does not pass by a 60% plus margin, okay, then in my way of thinking, there are, there are two options. I believe there is a Plan B, B1 and B2. It's either you gut it out and say, all those cuts are being made, so we're going to be underneath the cap. That's, that's a Plan B. I mean, painful as it is, you, well, I mean, there's actually three. You could put the same thing out again. If it failed by one vote, I might put it out, I might, I'm not sure I would, but I might. If it failed by a couple of votes, and we went out with 2.8, I'm just, I'm picking things out of the thin air now, and it failed by six votes, would I say, you know what, I bet if we got it to two, we'd make up those six votes, I might take a chance on that? The safest way is just to say, you know what, it didn't pass by no matter how many votes, so we're going to go under the cap now. We're cutting out $425,000 that are on that list, and we're fineing $25,000 more, and by God, we're going to be under that cap. So there is a Plan B, and there aren't a lot of Plan Bs, but you reduce the amount or you get to, you get under the cap. If anybody else has a third option, I'd love to hear it, but I've, you know, I've done some little bit of thinking at 3:00 in the morning about this, and that's a plan. And you know what? Before the tax levy cap existed, when you could go out multiple times, that was the thinking, only you were looking at your budget increase, not your levy increase, and how much do I have to cut it back to get it through the next time? And now that we have that tax levy cap limit as the touchstone, it's either, take the chance on the second vote by reducing it less but still overriding the cap, or saying, you know what, we went out for an override, you told us no, so we're not going to override, we'll be under that cap, come hell or high water. And then if it doesn't pass, what more could you do? What more could you do at that point? You know, to voluntarily cut it back to zero when you know it's going to go there anyway on a, on a second vote that doesn't pass? I mean, you don't have to do that, it'll do it for you. So that's, again, maybe simplistic, but that's my thinking. Exactly what to cut? You got a list of $425,000 worth of stuff. Bad stuff to cut, but there isn't better stuff to cut than we've been able to come up with, so, and we got a scratch for another $25,000, and we'll, we'll do what we have to do.
Diane?
Two, kind of, studio questions. What does it look like about, is it just stay, you know, if we're going above the cap, does it, is there like two choices, or is it just this, yes or no, it's, you know...
There's still a yes or no, but they detail out in that proposition about the, you're going over the cap. I mean, there's additional language that goes in there, but still, it's a yes, no.
So we'll say that.
It will say it, it brings it...
Could you, I'm sorry, could you, could we get that wording at some point?
I'm sure we can have it for you by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Just so you know, or before then.
And then if it doesn't pass, what is the time to put it up, do we lock into a certain time?
Yep, the third Tuesday in June.
So you have like a month?
About, yeah.
I mean, so the question of both of these is, if you limit amount of time to get the information out there, and maybe the case for going above, or...
Yeah, well, that's always, that's always the case if your first budget doesn't pass, whether it's a Pierce cap budget that doesn't pass, or a budget within the tax levy cap that doesn't pass. Yeah, it's a turnaround.
Even if it doesn't, I mean, before that, even between next week and May 17th, it's, you know, a short time to kind of get people to understand, you know, what's happening, why it's happening, and the reason for it, you know?
Well, yeah, no, I agree with you, but I would also say that we have the same amount, regardless of what we decide to do and approve on April 19th. Granted, it's not a ton of time, but we have the same amount of time as we've had every other year, from the time we adopt the budget to the time the vote occurs. It's always, it's always a quick turnaround. I'm not denying that.
I just think people are a little like, I mean, they don't pay attention so much because they're always in pressure now that, you know, the law of the 2%, and that's what it is, so I don't pay attention so much.
We've never done it.
It's almost easier if it goes down, because then people read the paper, they go, my God, the budget didn't pass, what's going on? Between now and then, they may not be paying attention as much.
We also have the newsletter, and, you know, there's nothing that says we can't change the format that it's in. I mean, it definitely worked with that, I mean, there's only like one page that's mandated on there, the rest of it, the other seven pages are what we do, so definitely...
And we talked in communication that the message is going to have to be different. There's still stuff we're going to put in there, because we have to show people, whether it's pierced or not, what we're proposing to spend money on, and there's a place in that budget document that's mandated that says what you're going to cut if it doesn't pass, right? And that's still in there, is it not?
Just a dollar amount. Not specifics, not specifics, not specifics, but we can put the specifics in.
We have to expand on that.
Lisa?
Of course, we also have budget hearings. So we have the state mandated hearing, and we also have our local budget hearing.
Which is on the 19th.
Which is on the 19th.
Before we adopt, yes.
Okay, so those are two opportunities to address the public about what we're doing, what we're recommending, and why we're recommending it. But of course, it's a double-edged sword, because, we've talked about this before, in years where we put out a budget that's at the levy limit, turnout in the district tends to be extremely low, and the half rate tend to be extremely high. You know, one of your historical budget information documents on...
You know, one of your, your historical budget information document on shows voter approval rates for the past four years in the 70% range, 72, 73 to almost 80% range of approval. So, you know, if we put out information to the community about how we're going out with a budget that pierces the, the cap, we inform people, we get them to understand why we want them to vote and why we believe that they should vote in favor of that budget, but we also give people who are rejectionist generally about taxes the opportunity to potentially coalesce resistance to that. And I don't really see that there's any way to avoid that dynamic, but it's a dynamic that we at least have to understand is, is something we're likely to miss.
One thing we talked about in communications is after this meeting, and with all the information that Tom has supplied us, with trying to sort of, among the communications committee, just start to figure out which are the most important pieces that might be good to begin to form and a document that's, for example, the PT SO and the Rymer Science Foundation offered that while they don't, their organizations don't advocate for passing a budget, that they could share information with their membership. So if we conceived of a document with some of this important information, that we could share it with those organizations and use that to disseminate. So that's something that we talked about doing after this meeting, is trying to begin to do something like that.
Another thing we talked about in communications, we were asking questions about advocacy, and obviously as a, as a board, we're not permitted to, you know, take on an advocacy role in relationship to the budget, but we as individuals do have the right to speak, reach out to friends, colleagues, networks in our community to explain, you know, our personal views on the budget, and so I don't see any reason why that wouldn't be something we would, if we feel comfortable as individuals, avail ourselves of.
All right. Any other comments? All right. I'd like to move on to the 2016-17 BOSI's Annual Meeting and Administrative Budget and Board Member Vote.
Okay. Not, not much information, or not much time we have to spend on this. The information's there, it's pretty self-explanatory. As Tom mentioned, their administrative budget that we're voting on is, is really pretty low. It's, it's below, it's below 1%. Yeah, that is good. And there are two people who are running for election to, to seats on the BOSI's Board, so we know who's going to get elected there, unless there are any write-ins, which there rarely is. They are having their, their annual meeting this Saturday at 11:30 down at the, down at the Career and Technical Institute at 11:30 a.m. They're having an open house that morning, so if anybody is interested, you're, you're welcome to participate in that. And then the election is at our second regular meeting of the month on April 26th, along with other stuff that we'll have, other business that we'll have to conduct. So, I mean, that said, it's, you know, I, I support the BOSI's budget. I, I know, or have not received any communication from either of the two candidates. I'm not sure if any of you as board members have, but they, they've both been, I mean, they're both longstanding board members in their districts, but beyond that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't attempt to endorse either one of them, not saying that they wouldn't do a good job of collecting. That's all I have to say about that particular thing.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Move on to board committee reports. The first one is finance. I did those minutes. So we had an update on the school lunch program. The school lunch program is still running at a deficit. It's about the same this year as it was last year at this time, however, that number is still much lower than it was for many years prior to that. So, you know, you can read into that what you will, but the program is doing better than it was. We have, 20% of our students are qualifying for free and reduced price lunch. We've kind of speculate that the reason for that is that SNAP and Medicaid recipients can now be automatically added to that program, so, you know, therefore, there's more people that, who may not declare their eligibility for the program, who are automatically enrolled. They can opt out if they want to. And we can actually receive a bit more reimbursement from someone who gets a free and reduced price lunch than we can for someone who buys lunch. We're going to be giving out the free and reduced forms in English and Spanish this coming year. Hopefully, that will encourage Spanish-speaking families to enroll if they qualify for free and reduced price lunch. We have many, many more students purchasing breakfast, and the number is somewhere around 1,500 breakfasts per month, which is considerably higher, I believe, than actually purchase lunch.
That would be how much we get in an entire year in past years, so, yeah.
So, you know, on the table is, we'll have to consider a price increase. We asked if we could have Larry Anthony come in and talk to us about strategies for increasing the price versus increasing participation, or increasing à la carte sales, or some combination thereof. So we're going to try to do that at a future meeting. We also received a update on the transportation bid, which were opened on March 30th. The good news is that the bids were, are within the budgeted figures that we have for this coming year's budget. You know, but they were a little bit higher than what we anticipated they might be. We'll have more details on that in the executive session later. We also had an update on the budget, so we've pretty much covered that, I think, in the last hour or so, so we won't go too much into that. You know, what we did discuss scenarios for piercing the cap, which we just had a discussion on that, so. Any questions for finance? Go ahead.
I just want to highlight, again, something that you said, which is that Tom reported that almost 20% of our students are eligible for free and reduced lunch, so it's very interesting, and we talk about our combined wealth ratio, and, you know, that number, that percentage, I think would be a shock to many people in the Hudson Valley. You know, as a community that's such a tourist community, a lot of second homes, with such a lovely downtown village, I think it's very easy for people not to notice that many of our neighbors are struggling, so, you know, I just think that's important information that we need to communicate to members of our community.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so move on to communications.
Okay, that's me. Of course, we spent a lot of time talking about the budget, and precisely how to share some of the kinds of information we've just spent the last hour talking about, including historical data for budget increases and how to get the word out. Obviously, we are not alone. This is an extremely challenging environment for all public schools in New York State, and actually, I quoted at length in the minutes, I won't go into all the details from a recent statement from early March in the Office of the Controller, that there is a, an increase in the number of school districts that are, at least at that early stage, have stated they're planning to override the property tax cap. As of March 6th, 6% were declaring that they intended to do so, and DeNapoli also sort of pointed out that school districts are feeling the impact of this historically low tax levy limit. And according to initial reports, nearly 13% of school districts in New York State are actually facing a negative levy limit. So just take the problems we're facing and kind of magnify them, that's what those folks are trying to cope with. So I've given you the link if you want to go read more, and the Office of the Controller is updating that information. So we will want to foreground the historical budget information with our voters, emphasizing that even if we exceed a 2% tax cap, up to 3%, it would still fall well below tax levy increases in years past. And Tom also pointed out something really important, and I think we need to share with our voters, which is to say, the prospect of receiving a rebate check is something that I think people are sort of anticipating, right? But do you want to just fill us in again? You said it was something like $6 is the average check?
This is what the other business officials had told me, because this question has come up. Because it's only at a .12% CPI, that that's what your rebate check is based on. It's not going to be based upon what we put out as a tax levy, but that CPI, that kind of, you know. So if you decide you want to go above and beyond because you've had some additional growth and things, that's fine with you, but we're only going to give you the .12, because that's the CPI. So on average, that amounts to about a $6 check. But I want to verify all that.
Okay.
I mean, there's, I have to read through all these bills and everything, because there's different stuff that comes in or buried in some of these things that, well, no one saw that one.
But in any case, it certainly doesn't seem as if it's going to be a particularly robust rebate check that would be waiting for us in the mailbox. So, so we thought that's an important thing to share, yeah.
I'm sorry, did that come as a question then? So if we do pierce the cap, is that, you know, it's a small rebate check, would that mean like for next year that there would be a rebate check?
Correct.
Yeah, the $6 one might not come through. So, and then we did realize, of course, we want to be kind of keeping our eye on that ball long-term, right, around some of these communications issues that have already arisen in our conversation tonight. In May and June, once we do move through the budget season, we would like to start talking about getting this group together with members in the community to talk about creative solutions to declining enrollments. Obviously, strong schools are crucial for a strong community, and we do want to talk about this in the summer workshop if possible. And then, thirdly, an important issue came up about how we coordinate our communications. We've moved so effectively into the domain of electronic communications and tweeting and using our wonderful new website, that sometimes maybe the print publications or print communications lag occasionally when there's some sort of new news about giving, giving back snow days, or taking away the give-back days, and so as changes are made, how, how do they make their way into things like the school newsletters? And that opened up a kind of a broader question of, do we have a sense of how many people really aren't accessing information electronically? Maybe there are some who only use smartphones, for instance, and don't really use laptops or, or computers to look at the website, and obviously, the goal is to get an, an app for the district website that'll be friendly to, to phones. So that's kind of an open question for us moving forward, in terms of how well we communicate with all members of the district.
All right. Questions for communications? All right, seeing none. Move on to good news. If there is any. Hopefully, there's some.
I've seen the signs for the school play. And tickets sales, which I understand are robust.
If I were of each man.
So we can all join in now. I'm sure we all know at least one song from the country. And then another thing is, I think spring...
You can settle this budget cap.
I think some of the spring sports actually did start, despite the winter weather.
There was a baseball game on Friday.
There was one baseball game, so that's always exciting, though, when spring sports start.
All right. Anyone else with good news? All right, move on to old business. I do have one item, I'm not sure where it really fits in, but I'm going to mention it. This Thursday at Arlington High School at 7:00 p.m. is the, the regent for our area is going to be there, so you have an opportunity to come out and hear what she has to say and meet her. So if you're interested, 7 o'clock at Arlington High School. Okay? Lisa?
I'm not sure if there's really much point in discussing this, but I do at least want to raise the subject about the standardized testing having started today, and I saw the, the figures that were circulated about students who refused the test. So is there anything more to say about that at this point than that?
I think the numbers are up at some grade levels, fairly low at, at a few other grade levels, 3 through 8. They sometimes change from day to day, so...
But it looks like so far, all grade levels are above 5%? Or one grade level wasn't, but the rest of them were?
Yeah, I have to go back and look at what I sent, but I think most of them are above 5%. And you plan on a, an article in the Poughkeepsie Journal tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Well, it's already on the website.
Oh, is it?
There's a, there's a school district by school district action.
And I assume that, I'm sorry, I assume that the next principal's report will have some more information for us about that and about the tests themselves.
By then, they'll be history. But you'll probably know all information before their report anyway, but they may have some insights to share.
Okay. Thank you.
Deidre?
Well, I was going to say that with the principal's reports, I'm sure they'll share with us that information, but I guess just my own perspective, and it's a larger question, of course, is, you know, a larger discussion, rather, of course, is, you know, there's a lot of change going on, and I think it's just a part of it, you know? I mean, I don't think it's something... Thanks to the opt-out movement, the state of New York is reevaluating the whole rollout of standardized testing, so, you know, there's still a lot of churn, and this is how parents and students may know this, like what they think, so we just kind of have to roll with it and see how things go.
Completely different matter, so if people want to say anything else about opt-out?
Yeah, I just had a question. This year with, or last year with the opt-outs, we weren't penalized.
Correct.
But there is the specter of that not happening moving forward, right?
There was last year too, but nothing happened, so, again, I think you're looking at every school district in the state just about, except for some in the cities. Apparently, many of the city schools have had good turnouts for their testing. They're looking at a lot of school districts not getting federal aid. For us, I mean, we don't get a lot of federal aid. If there's any good news in the aid pictures, then we don't get a ton of it to begin with, so...
But our governor's not tying participation with our state aid.
He's, no, no, no. But there is an interesting little twist on that, but I'll, I'll wait until after the questions go.
Well, no, I'm going to, no, you go ahead, because this, what I have is another piece of old...
Well, this has, does not have anything to do with the opt-outs or the, or the assessments, but one of the things Tom alluded to earlier, that, you know, when the dust settles and you get, you stop thinking about the state aid runs and you start hearing these little nuggets that got buried in the budget language, one of the things, you know that we're in the process of negotiating 3012D APPR, that we applied for a waiver, we granted a waiver along with 600 other districts in the state, and then every school district got a, a permanent waiver until September. Apparently, it's in the budget bill that any school district that doesn't have an adopted, negotiated, adopted 3012D plan in place, approved by September 1st, will lose not only next year's state increase, but this year's state increase. So you can thank your governor for that. I, I feel confident we will have that in place. I mean, we've been working on it for months, and even though there's been a slight lull waiting to see what came out of all the stuff, and Albany, we met just today, and I, I feel very confident we'll have a plan in place, but just, you know, you've got to read the fine print in these budget bills.
Yeah. Full stick and no carrot.
Yeah. So that's all I have.
So just one other piece of old business, which is to say, when we last met, we did vote on the school start time change, and I, I simply want to say, I love spending time with the school start time committee, so I'm hoping that we will, as soon as we get through our budget cycle, just reconvene and keep the magic alive and, and make plans, you know, for, not only for preparing our students, for the changes that are coming... you know, for, not only for preparing our students, for the changes that are coming, our families, getting our assessment plans in order, and, you know, just to assure those of us who are continuing to follow this, this matter, that our business is not done.
And as they said in When Harry Met Sally, I'll have what she's having.
Love that committee.
All right, any other old business? Okay, move on to public comment? No public comment? Okay, other. I have one. I was just reading before the meeting, the area director update from NISBA, and there's something in there about they're looking for school boards to appoint an advocacy liaison for NISBA. It wasn't clear to me exactly what they wanted, but they recommend that it be the same person who is your delegate for the convention, so...
Whatever that does, I don't know.
20 seconds.
I have to read more into that, decide whether I want to do that. But anyway, one other I got. So, go ahead.
I have another, which is that Miriam brought a couple of absentee ballots to me, because I have kids at college, so I would just recommend that if anyone needs that, and I actually think that as communications committee, you should talk about maybe putting information on how to obtain an absentee ballot on the website.
Do we have that information already prepared? I know we've had it in past years.
We've got the notice.
Okay. And have you put together the notice yet?
Yeah, it's been in the paper.
Okay, maybe you could send me, email me a copy of that, and I can cut and paste that piece out and highlight it on the, on the website.
And tweet it.
And tweet it.
What's the deadline date for the ballots, you know?
So people have to, if they want an application, if they want it mailed, it has to be seven days before, otherwise they can stop by and pick up the application. Once they do the application, then they get the ballot. They have to have that ballot in to me, I think, the day before or by 5:00 o'clock that same day.
Okay.
All right, any other other? Okay, move on to action items. There is only one item in the consent agenda. I don't suppose anyone wants to remove anything from the consent agenda, but speak now or forever hold your peace. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Well, I guess there's no discussion.
I would just, I would just say that the plan is to donate all of that old computer junk to the technology club, and they're going to make stuff with it, tear it apart, better than throwing it in the dumpster, and I'm sure they'll have fun.
That's great.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to certify Stephen Jensen as a qualified lead evaluator of classroom teachers during the 2015-16 school year, having successfully completed the training requirements prescribed in 8 NYCRR 30-2.9B.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Elaine Arbuckle, senior typist, for the purpose of retirement as stated, effective the close of business on June 30th, 2016.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Laura Magley, senior typist, for the purpose of retirement as stated, effective the close of business on Monday, August 15th, 2016.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Gary Finger, custodian, for the purpose of retirement as stated, effective the close of business on June 30th, 2016.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Nicole Sandoval to commence on or about September 20th, 2016, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave, and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave through the conclusion of the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an athletic merger with the Pine Plains Central School District for football for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We may have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of a particular person and performance of a particular vendor.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes.